Andrew, I see you online. Can you hear us from here in the room?
Yes, I can.
Great, thank you so much.
Executive session, thanks for your patience. Seven ten and we'll go ahead and start the BOT open meeting for the evening. Macy, you want to take role?
Mayor Billy.
Mayor?
Mayor Protem Sterling.
Here.
Trustee Corvalon.
Here.
Trustee Maris.
Here.
Trustee Miller.
Yeah, he won't be here for this meeting.
Okay, thank you.
And he won't be joining later. Looks like he might be.
Okay, great. Trustee Larson, please. Thank you so much. And trustee Ty is here. He just has stepped out. So just to note for the record that trustee Miller is absent this evening. Thank you.
Thanks, I appreciate it. And for the sake of the recording, it's May, it's our May twentieth twenty twenty five meeting. And with that, we'll go into our consent agenda. For the evening. All right, there we are. Got five items on the consent agenda. Any questions on those? Probably direct to John.
I move to approve the consent agenda.
Second.
Macy.
Mayor Protem Sterling.
Yes.
Trustee Larson.
Yes.
Trustee Maris.
Yes.
Mayor Billy.
Yes.
Trustee Ty.
Yes.
Trustee Corvalon.
Can't hear you, Tanya.
We can.
She may have dropped off.
Note for the record that she was not present for this vote due to connectivity issues. And that's the, the rest of you. That's all of you. So motion approved.
Thanks, Macy. Well, that will go into staff reports. John?
Mayor and trustees, I'd just like to read into the record what I wrote in my staff report. And that's just to recognize Troy Hendricks and his extraordinary service to the town of Netherland. Troy will conclude his tenure in early June, marking the end of years of dedicated service to public safety and civic stewardship. Throughout his work as police officer, police administrator, court clerk, and emergency manager, Troy has exemplified what it means to serve with professionalism, dedication, and heart. In communities like Netherland, individuals like Troy don't just fill roles, they shape the very institutions we rely on. His leadership has helped keep Netherland safe, grounded, and resilient. On behalf of our entire team and the community, I'd like to extend our deepest gratitude for his years of service. His legacy will continue to guide us, and we wish him well in his next chapter. The other thing I'd like to just point out is in Rita's staff report, she has put the financials for April in the, in the, in her report. One note is that we are still working with the auditor to finalize last year's financials. Those will probably, they'll be there pretty soon, I think. I think maybe at the end of May is like the earliest we can expect that. She's also got some highlights from the general fund. You can see that we have been doing a pretty good job on expenditures, and we're kind of so monitoring that revenue. It's important to note that like sales tax revenue comes in two months in arrears. So we're still kind of looking at how we're doing on that. If you have any questions about her staff report, the rest of my staff report, or anything else, please let me know.
Any questions for John or town staff?
Oh, I have a question for John about Troy. That's, that's a bummer. I think he's a big addition to our, our town staff. Are we looking to, are we hiring this position, replacing, or delegating it somehow else?
Right now, we have an interim person that's going to be filling the role. There is some security concerns for the court management piece. There's what's called CGIS training, which is like the way, this is security training to be able to deal with citations. We have a person and her name is Grace Goud, and she's been working as our volunteer driver coordinator. And she is got some background that made her interested in that role. So she's going to fill it in interim position. We're going to look at the role a little bit and how specifically we manage emergency management. And then my anticipation is Grace can manage this. We don't have a court date in June, which helps us. And so I think she can manage through our July court date. And then we're gonna look at whether that might be something, like how we're going to hire that position out. But we will be replacing this position. It may be slightly different, but it will be, it'll be as soon as we possibly can.
Okay, thanks for the answer.
Other questions for John or town staff?
Yeah, I have a couple of questions. So John, the bid for safer Main Streets, can you just give us an update on where that's at?
Can you repeat? I'm sorry.
The bid for safer Main Streets for the work that needs to be done?
For the, the SMS grant or?
Safer, yeah, for like the.
Yeah, I gotcha.
Yeah.
So we had a meeting today with Nathan Scallick from JVA.
Okay.
And what is happening right now is the Uniform Act requires there to be a negotiation for temporary easements, which are required for anything next to our right of way where the work is happening. And it sounds like that is being kind of wrapped up on SMS, and we should be able to be out to bid very soon, is what he's told us. I don't know if that means a month or like two weeks, but essentially, we think that we're almost to the point where we can go out to bid, and it can still happen this summer. The TIPS project, which is related, may be a little bit behind that, just because there's more complexity in it. But we still think that we can get that accomplished this year. So that's kind of what our working hypothesis is right now, is to try to get everything done by December.
Okay, gotcha. I don't think Andrew's on, but maybe you can answer this. In terms of the backflow prevention assembly, is that going to require additional budget? Is he?
Hey, I'm, I'm on. Hey, sorry about that.
No problem.
I'm in the gym. I don't know if it's too loud, but I'm, no, no, it doesn't require more budget.
Okay, awesome. Just wanted to check and make sure that you guys were taken care of. And then Ty from, or I guess we'll wait until we get to the trustee reports. But those are all I have for staff. Thank you.
Any other questions on, on, on staff reports? If not, we will go into BOT reports. Thank you for the two of you who actually wrote out your reports. I, I didn't, I was not one of those, but um, I will say, I did not, I had a conflict, was not able to go to the Peak to Peak Alliance meeting this month, so I have no updates there. And in general, just exciting to see so many things happening in our community as we kind of come out of winter and start spring last weekend with so many things going on with dance recitals, piano recitals, big party at Tin Shed, the history societies, sound auction, and so many things going on that night. And then our first farmer's market. Felt good to have a, get our spring off to a good start. Folks, if you, if you wrote one, I appreciate it. If you didn't, if you could give a quick report, if you have anything to report.
This is Tierney, and I have nothing to report. NEPA DAC did not meet this past month, but will be meeting this month.
This is Chris. Can you hear me?
Yeah.
Good. Cause I have something to report. Last week was my first meeting as the trustee liaison to the NDDA. And so we had a meeting, went through a lot of different things, but I think the, the couple of big things I wanted to just mention that the DDA is continuing to work on is the memorandum of understanding the MOU between and proposed bylaws between the NDDA and the board of trustees. And I think that is getting very close to completion, so we should be coming back to the board trustees in the very near future after the DDA sees it. And the second part was the DDA awarded just under $20,000 worth of special event grants to events around the town, specifically to focus on marketing and traffic and safety. So a bunch of different events around the town, ranging from the Ned Gravel, Ned Ned. I'm not gonna, I'm certainly going to miss on here as I'm working off of memory. But the Summer Concert Series was a big one that we gave a lot to as well. And the first of the Summer Concert Series is coming up in just a couple of weeks at Chappeta Park. So I think this is going to be, you know, obviously a nice continuation of what the DDA started with the town last summer, and looking forward to another successful summer of that. That's it.
Thanks, Chris. Tanya, anything to report?
I don't. I don't. I guess BZA will let me know they're gonna meet.
Thank you. Shit.
Trustee Ty, I have a question. Those, the grants for that SAB is applying to, do those have matching grants that are, are like matching requirements that are going to affect us?
I honestly don't know. I can get with Melody and get back to you on that. There was a lot of stuff fired off that night. These notes.
These notes, I I hope you're proud of me. I used AI.
You used. It's beautiful.
Thank you.
I'm so proud of you.
I worked really hard. I will get back to you about that.
Yeah, this is the impact. Hello?
Hi, this is Cass. I'm I'm on. I can answer that question.
Sure.
Yeah. So they do not have requirements for matching. There is suggested matching, but it is not a requirement to receive the award.
Suggested but not required. That's a first, I feel like.
Yes.
Okay, so there's no impact. There's nothing like a decision that the board of trustees would have to make?
Not necessarily, but we would bring it to the board of trustees before submitting an application.
Okay, got it. And then I saw in like the request for B O T work session to clarify when the scorecard is used. Isn't is that clarified already somewhere or codified? I mean?
Sort of. The work session needs to be more broad than just talking about the scorecard.
Okay.
The scorecard was created by resolution in 2013, and it isn't clear. Actually, it's very clear about how it's used. It's it's executed when the board of trustees chooses to execute it. But there are some questions about how that happens and if it could be different. There's also been some work on this app for from Sustainability Advisory Board about what it actually looks at, and I think that is one of the questions is is how that works.
So it's 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 more just beyond to clarify when it's used. There's a bunch of other stuff baked into that.
And correct me if I'm wrong, like we talked about clarifying some some wording in there, so it's just a little clearer, right?
Okay.
I think clarity in both process and and then looking at the criteria.
Okay, I was just gonna say, if it was already somewhere, just but anyways, it sounds like there's a lot more to talk about, so that's fine. Okay, that's all. Thank you.
More questions for any of the trustees? Well, thanks. Well, that will go into our first action item of the evening, an amendment to JVA, to the JVA agreement for the Big Springs Egress Project. John?
Mayor and trustees, the JVA, the agreement that we have with JVA is actually separate from our general engineering agreement that we have. The one for Big Springs is specific to that work, and it was done through an RFP. That's another federal grant that's guided by federal requirements. That original agreement expired in on December thirty first of 2024. And I think it caught us a little flat footed. We didn't know it actually that happened, and I think it was just with the transition of to me and everything. And so what we're trying to do is just fix that and extend it so that we can continue finishing that project. We are still planning on bringing a community meeting for that pretty soon, and then trying to wrap up that planning by the end of the year. And that meeting, we should have scheduled here. Hopefully, we'll have it done this week. But for right now, what we're trying to do is just bring this through December thirty first, 2025, so we can continue to work and be in good standing with our federal funding partners.
And then, just before we get into any more clarifying questions, just the recommendation is is that there there be a motion and, you know, an action to authorize me, the mayor, to execute the first amendment to this professional services agreement with JVA. So you have any clarifying questions? Tanya and Chris, you have any clarifying questions?
Nope, sounds good.
No.
I'm sorry, go ahead.
Oh, just now, yeah, we gotta extend it so we can finish it. Yep.
With that, we'll go to public comment. Any public comments? We'll go start in the room with on the amendment to the JVA contract on the Big Springs Egress Project.
I suspect they're here for something else.
I can't figure out what. That was this. Folks online, anyone online have a comment for this agreement, amendment to our agreement with JVA? If not, we'll bring it back to the board for discussion and a motion.
I move to approve resolution 2025-10 authorizing the mayor to execute the first amendment to the professional services agreement with JVA Inc.
Second.
Thank you both. Any discussion? Macy?
Trustee Ty?
Yes.
Trustee Larson?
Yeah.
Mayor Billy?
Yes.
Mayor Protam Sterling?
Yes.
Trustee Maris?
Yes.
And trustee Corvalon?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thanks, everyone. Appreciate that. Hopefully, we'll be done long before December thirty first of this year. Well, that will move to our discussion items. First discussion item is the Teens Inc. lease amendment. John?
Mayor and trustees, in February of 2025, the town entered into a ground lease with Teens Inc. for the development of a childcare facility at 750 West Fifth Street. This is through ordinance eight seventy two. This was following a special review, a special review use approval by ordinance eight fifty nine and subsequent voter authorization of the underlying use. The lease limits the facility to eighty six hundred square feet, although in the SRU, a size of around 10,000 square feet is contemplated. During the building permit review process in April 2025, Brit identified that the plans reflected a facility size of approximately ninety six hundred sixteen feet. This exceeds the lease limit by 1,616 square feet, which is about 20.2%. Teens acknowledged the discrepancy and attributed to a misunderstanding regarding how usable space is calculated. Teens has submitted a formal request to amend the lease to authorize the new square footage, stating that redesign is cost prohibitive and would jeopardize the facility's ability to meet its programmatic needs. Additionally, they have indicated that the project timeline is constrained by funding, licensing procedures, and operational startup requirements. Delays in resolving the building size issue could impact the financial viability and scheduled opening of the facility. I have a couple of things just to consider in the staff report here. The first is the contractual compliance. Section 3.01B of the ground lease limits the building size to eighty six hundred square feet. Construction by this limit is not authorized by the current agreement. It is important to note that from a land use perspective, the special review use zoning approvals authorize construction of the childcare facility up to 10,000 square feet. No changes to zoning entitlements are needed to change the lease. However, you will have to amend that lease document to make sure that it's in alignment. We have talked to Teens about options here, and they've stated that reconfiguring the project to reduce square footage is going to introduce cost, timeline, and design risks. They also notes that post-construction startup, which involves licensing, hiring, and classroom preparation, requires a lot of lead time, and any delay in authorization may impact their ability to open the facility. This facility is intended to doc or to address a well-documented need for expanded childcare services in the Netherland area, and the use was affirmed by voters in 2024. At the same time, the proposed change represents a material and significant deviation from the terms presented to the public and approved by this board. I have a couple of options for you to consider, although there may be others. The first is you could direct staff to prepare a lease amendment authorizing a maximum building size of ninety six hundred and sixteen square feet, with or without additional conditions such as operational assurances, community notice, or conformance validation. You could decline to amend the lease, requiring Teens to redesign the facility to comply with the current eighty six hundred square foot limit, or you could defer action and direct staff to continue working with Teens to identify a solution. In my staff report, I recommend that you formally receive and discuss this request. The board may wish to desert or wish to weigh the long-term implications of contract enforcement, public trust, and timely delivery of critical community services. Attached to my staff report is a letter from Teens that details a room size analysis.
Do you have any clarifying questions for John? I do, actually. Under your recommendation, the board may wish to weigh the long-term implications of contract enforcement, public trust, and the timely delivery of services. Can you kind of get a little more detailed on those first two?
Sure. So I think that one of the things that we worked really hard on when we were building the contract is to develop a contract that we could manage over the life of the lease, which is ninety nine years. So we need to contemplate that staff will change in that time, and that this will need to be something that's revisited. And I think by and large, the structure of that agreement is pretty solid. But I was thinking as we kind of go, like, there's, you know, this is a change to the contract, so if this is, this might be an opportunity to talk about if there's anything else in terms of that contract that we want to think about. The public trust piece, I think, I think the reason I wrote that is because there was a vote on this, a referendum vote, and it passed pretty with pretty good margin, I'd say. And I think that the thing to remember is is that that's really important, but also important is just weighing this transparency issue and making sure that everyone's clear on what that lease says and how big the building will be. And that when we go to issue permits, we'll we'll do a final review of this and make sure everything is in compliance with that that lease document. I think that's really important for a project like this. And I think that we have gone through a very extensive process on this. I think you guys have now been working on this for over two years and processed since the time the SRU was first submitted. And so I think that what's important is that we continue that 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 pathway we're on of engaging with the community and engaging with yourselves to make sure that this contract is is the best it can be for Netherland and for Teens.
Thanks. More clarifying questions? And just to point out, actually, real quick, the things we're considering are whether we prepare a lease amendment authorizing to go bigger. I think it's ninety six sixteen, actually ninety six hundred, or decline to amend the lease, requiring Teens to redesign to the smaller size or defer action for now. So do you have any clarifying questions?
Can we ask the applicant some clarifying questions, or do you want to wait till public comment?
No, I think I think that'd be great. Let me just check on Tanya and Chris. Anything now? Any clarifying questions for John before we have Stephen come up?
I do know.
Chris? Did you say again? All right. It's not.
Losing control of the meeting with the terrible connectivity here. I have no questions for town staff.
Okay, great. Cool. Well, with that, probably is a great idea to bring the applicant up to talk with us, and if you have any representatives from your design and building team, just let us know if they're here either in person or online.
I'm sure. I'm Stephen LaFaber. I'm executive director of Teens Inc., and I believe Greg Porter and Rick Sander are online from Halsey Miller Architects and Colton Himmelman from Himmelman Construction, our contractor, and also Corey Taylor from the Early Childhood Council Boulder County, who helped consult through the design process.
Okay, thanks. Do you have something you want to talk with us about first or before we have questions for you?
Sure, I'll just point out a few things. One is the square footage came from this document, which is what was available to me at the time when we were negotiating, where it says total building area, eight thousand five hundred and ninety square feet. It's, I did not realize that there was a usable square footage versus footprint. That's where that number came from. I do want to just point out again, the SRU, in that, the 10,000 square foot building is what was approved in in that SRU. And then also the vote, seventy two percent voted for it, but during that time, too, if you recall, the main argument against it was size, and that the size that was being pointed out throughout that was fifteen thousand square feet. And it's still won by seventy two percent. So I think the town, the voters are fully in favor of a building this size to serve sixty five children. If we have to cut eighty or a thousand square feet out of this, it would jeopardize the project fully. We would have to we would not be serving sixty five children. There's no way that we could cut and not cut children. Right now, we just updated our waitlist in March, and sixty nine children are on it, of which for seventy two percent, seventy percent need care in the next twelve months. But it's not, you mentioned budget and time. Time is definitely an issue. Budget, yep, it's an issue. It would increase costs by through escalation costs, redesign. Money that's saved in cutting square footage would not be substantial, because all the mechanics, everything that goes inside the building to run the building would still be the same. But those aren't really the issues to us. The issues are the service to the community. We wouldn't be serving the community as stated from the SRU right from the get-go. One thing we got right in the SRU was that the size of the building, it's all dictated by licensing. So we were pretty spot on when we thought right around 10,000 square feet, and we made it as small as we possibly could. That was kind of one of the directives we had with the architects, is make it as small as it possibly can within licensing. We were directed by the consultants that you want at least ten percent more in each classroom for functionality, for creating a nice learning environment. So we did that. And even if we cut that, that's only cutting two hundred and ninety seven square feet. So we would be cutting children out of the building, and that's not where we want to go. So that's the purpose of revisiting this. That's what the voters voted for. It's what the SRU said. And there was a you know, I looked, I didn't, the document said eight thousand five hundred and ninety square feet, so that's what I thought was the square footage, which is how many people do calculate square footage is by usable square footage. Happy to.
Not the footprint is like what you said. It didn't count like building walls.
It was from inside.
It's an L-shaped building, so there's a lot of exterior walls. It didn't count the walls, and it didn't count the trash enclosure and two outdoor storage sheds for the playground.
Okay, and so that's part, a couple of my clarifying questions is, so it's ten thou, just over 10,000 square feet, I think in the SRU is like 10,091. However, just to clarify, the the level one footprint of that was about 7,404, and now it's a one-story building that you're asking for nine, nine thousand six hundred and sixteen square feet.
Correct.
Correct. Okay.
But the size of that building was 10,000 square feet, even though the.
Level one and level two. Yeah, is yeah, but the 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 first level footprint was smaller back then. Okay. My other question is that this ninety six sixteen, that includes everything now, buildings, but it doesn't include things like parking lot or playground?
Correct.
Okay.
You have more questions for Andrew or Stephen?
I was using.
Go ahead.
Just one sec. I think I think just one sec, Chris.
Yeah, just one quick, the the parking lot, square footage, do you have it off the top of your head or your engineers? Makes sense later on.
Anyone know the, I mean, it's a drop off.
Okay.
And then there's fourteen, fifteen, sixteen spots. Correct me if I'm wrong, anyone?
I think anyone is designers or builders. If you're not.
Yeah, I can. I can respond. This is Rick Sander. I work with Halsey Miller Architects. I believe so, Stephen, we're talking sixteen parking spots. Three of those are paved. One of the paved parking spaces is a handicap space with a loading zone portion of that. The rest are unpaved.
So potentially another 2,000 square feet.
The building, the the size is filled. It's a challenging spot. We knew that from the get-go. It's point seven five acres. It is used for serving children in the community.
Tanya and Chris?
I just have one quick question. The the creek, the stream area, is is that still intended to remain wetland? I just have one quick question. Um, the, the creek, the stream area, is, is that still intended to remain uh, wetland and open to the neighborhood?
It's, the creek is, the north side of the property is parking spots right along the road or right along the building and access for bikes, cars, anything between, it's basically still the road. There is a trail required. The trail, we can put a trail in the easement area of that. Required for permitting. Okay.
You're only talking in your mic.
The, the, there is a trail next to the creek as well that is in the SRU and the parking requirements, and there is a hug and go lane as well in there. So those are the, those are the requirements of the SRU. So the trail would be right to the north of the driveline. Right next to the building is parallel parking. Then there's a driveline and then there's a trail.
Okay, so that, that, that area along the stream is, is going to remain, um, you know, wetland-y and rehabilitated and possibly even expanded perhaps.
Yeah, we will. The, there's no encroachment on the stream from where the road is right now.
Awesome. Good to hear. Thank you.
Do you have any other questions, Tanya?
Not, not right now. Thanks.
Okay, Chris, do you have any questions? Clarifying questions?
Yeah, I have a question for Stephen. You, you speak of the, you know, um, the needed space and your, your additional space for each child to meet the sixty-five uh, child goal for the facility. And you have a table, there's a table in the packet that lays out kind of the, the, the regulation, the ratio, and then the goal size of this facility. And if you add those all up, they're still under a third of the original building size. And you're saying that you can't squeeze twenty-two hundred feet of classroom into eighty-seven hundred feet of building that's already permitted?
So included, correct. Cause included in that is a three hundred square foot commercial kitchen, an amazing amount of bathrooms that are required in childcare facilities, bathrooms for each classroom, bathrooms for the public. Um, there's a hallway that's ADA compliant. Um, there is a staff workroom, a director's office, a mother's nursing room, uh, and then mechanical rooms. And no, there's no way, there's no way of taking that out without impacting classrooms and impacting the amount of people we can serve. Corey, if you want to add anything to that or, or anyone?
Three times as much ancillary space as classroom space.
That is correct. If we want to have a nice building where teachers feel, feel welcome, where they can do good work, there's storage units because for curriculum for young kids, you can't have like books and workbooks. You use like lots of materials for play curriculum. So there's every school that I've met, went and visited, the number one thing that teachers would say is provide storage to make a, to help make a welcoming environment. Um, our commercial kitchen is only three hundred square feet to serve forty, fifty-five children at capacity. Um, that's pretty small.
You're looking for sixty-five kids.
Ten of them will be infants.
So they don't need the kitchen.
Correct. But what you have to have in the infant room is a refrigerator.
Mm-hmm.
Cribs. Um. Anyone else want to help me tell?
High chairs.
What's that?
High chairs.
Some sort of high chairs. Um.
Uncluttered, open space for children to learn to crawl and walk.
Okay, I was just, I was asking a question of the applicant. Nicole, you can let the applicants answer for themselves instead of trying to support them during this.
That was Corey, one of our consultants.
Part of his team. Sorry, Chris, because you know, you can't see.
I heard, I heard Nicole Sterling speaking up.
Yeah, because he asked the rest of the group, like, what are the other things? He motioned to us in the, in the, in the room.
I was, and I'm asking for the applicant, not of the Board of Trustees.
Fair enough.
You're part of his team now?
What, go ahead if you have more questions.
I, I'm now asking, is Nicole Sterling part of the Teens Inc. team?
I don't know. How much do they pay?
She, she's not, Chris, she's not.
Okay, she was, you know, because I can't see. She said there, he was waving to the team and she was answering. So I just wanted to get, get that clear.
Good feedback duly noted. Do you have any more clarifying questions for the team?
No.
Other trustees? I just have some feedback for the team. Um, I will just give you a a uh, and somebody needs to work on design teams for big projects, mostly residential, but um, you would do well to support your clients better by meeting with them and proofreading and helping when they are making a proposal like this, say in this setting, you know, to a town or municipality. Um, really, y'all should have been proofreading it and pointing Stephen to the right number and you know, it could be argued thousand feet, square feet is not the end of the world, but it's not helping the project settle into its neighborhood as well as it could have.
I, if I would have, if I would have asked the, our team to review our lease, they surely would have and they I did not do that. So I can take the blame of looking at the document I had.
Okay, well, hopefully next time they'll remind their client to ask them.
And, and I would say, okay. It's, it's their, their jobs to help us build. You know, the, the job, we have attorneys. I messed up. I looked at the thing that said eight thousand five hundred and ninety square feet.
And I looked at it with you and honestly, i- it was a reasonable mistake. And I'll totally, you know, like, looking at where you saw on one page, clearly looked like square footage. But then I brought you another page where you could clearly see the real square footage.
Which.
It's a common mistake for, for someone who's not using, used to reading plans to make.
None of that we had because we're trying to do, one of our goals from the get-go is to do this as quickly as we can to bring relief to the community and bring some, and also to save some costs to, because things are going to just get crazy more expensive as we go and to bring support to the community. Right from the first meeting, our, one of our stated goals was to do this as quickly as we possibly can. So we've done a lot of things that are probably not the absolute best way to do it, which is design it at the same time as doing in a lease and all these things. So we're trying to do it as best we can, as quick as we can. And this was an oversight based on usable square footage versus actuals footprint. And they would have definitely jumped in and, and helped if I would have asked them. I remember the exact time on the lease negotiations when I was like, oh, can we make that eighty-six hundred square feet? And that's what happened.
Okay, thanks. Hopefully they'll be more proactive next time.
Hopefully I'll follow up with.
Well, next time I know you, you'll also follow up differently. Um, more clarifying questions or comments for the team before we go to public comment? If not, we'll go to public comment. We will start in the room. Hey, Tom.
Thank you, Stephen.
Thanks, Stephen. You may have to come up later on, but.
Highly likely. Um, glad to see you all again. Billy, uh, I share your concern. That was sloppy work, Stephen. Uh, good apology, but it's sloppy work. That said, uh, number one, I own three houses in the neighborhood. Uh, neighbor, another neighbor owns three houses in the neighborhood. I think we, we're in alignment behind this project. There's been other very loud people, including a member of the Board of Trustees who's been hostile towards the project, who's been hostile towards another trustee tonight. And I think that trustee should recuse himself ultimately from a vote. Um, I don't think he's unbiased. Um, another thing to think about, I went to on Saturday to a graduation at the high school. Um, it was, it was fascinating. I don't have kids in high school, but um, there were almost two million dollars of awards for scholarships. Seventy-five percent of the kids went, did uh, advanced placement tests. It's an amazing class of twenty-four kids that are making their mark. This is our farm team. And if we don't back them, um, that, you know, in my tax bill, I just looked at before I came up here, twenty-five hundred dollars of my taxes, my sixty-one hundred, twenty-five hundred is for BVSD. Um, imagine you don't have a school. You're still going to be charged that twenty-six, twenty-five, twenty-six hundred bucks, more than half. Um, and it's, it's crazy, I think, to forget in all the back and forth over neighborhood issues, what's really at stake here is these kids. Uh, you remember sitting here with uh, all the pajama kids coming in uh, that evening. This has gone on for a long time. I really think it was sloppy staff work. Um, we can get past that, but I've looked at this yesterday and there really is no room to cut back on anything legally uh, space-wise without impacting who's coming to school. So for the sake of these kids, I'd say give this a solid thought. I think Chris, uh, Trustee Larson should recuse himself on the vote. And I hope you, we make a good decision. I look forward to having this facility as my neighbor very, very much. That's it.
Thanks, Tom. Congratulations on your grandkid. More comments from inside the room?
I'm Jen Coro. I am a resident of Nederland. I am a business owner in Nederland and I'm the president of Teens Inc. Not the president, president of the board. Um, I just want to make a point, um, that we have hired and we have consulted with the experts in early childhood. And they are advising us on all the legalities and all the things that we need to address the, the, the um, need in the community and address the number of kids that need help in the community. And they are advising us on square footage. They are advising us on um, all of the, the um, special requirements that add space. Um, and I just want to re, to remind you of that. And thank you for sitting here again, talking about Teens Inc. and early childhood.
Thanks, Jen. Other comments?
Hi, I'm Kate DeScerto. Um, very, very minor maybe correction if I can do math right, but I believe it's only a ten percent increase in the original proposal, not a twenty-two percent increase. Um, and then I just want to thank Stephen as an employee of Stephen's and as a mom in Nederland. It might have been sloppy, but the man is nothing but amazing at what he does and the effort and energy that he puts into not only us as his team, but as a, a member of this community. So a mistake was made, but I, I say to call him sloppy is a disservice to the level of commitment and heart he brings to our town.
Thanks, Kate. Other comments from folks in the room?
Charles Wood, I'm uh, I live out on Magnolia Road near sixty-eight now, but I used to live here. I used to be on this board. Uh, my, my current connection with the town is I'm president of the Board of the Carousel of Happiness, uh, which has a lot in common or a lot of common audience, I'd say, with Teens Inc., families and kids. And it has another thing in common was that it uh, originated with the land lease. Uh, it couldn't have happened. You couldn't, the carousel couldn't have raised the other arts-funded money and stuff like that if it hadn't already had a piece of land that was accounted for. So I understand where they're at here. They've Teens Inc. has gone through a lot to get just where they are. And they've got funding lined up. They've got big-time community support and a very big need in the community. Um, that they're ready to address. And you can, you could see evidenced by the, what, seventy-two percent, did we say voted for the project? So the town is expecting this once. It, this seems like a small clerical error or issue. Somebody got the wrong piece of paper for the wrong purpose. I mean, I don't know. Um, useful, useful space looks different to a educator than it does maybe it may to a somebody else. But it's a small thing and the town can solve it now. This has been litigated for about a year, I think, and uh, the town can just take care of it. Um, so please do or prepare to explain to seventy-two percent of your constituents why you didn't. Teens Inc. is funding it. We're, the town doesn't pay a nickel for a five million dollar building. And they're going, and it owns the building ultimately. If Teens Inc. isn't successful, if they are successful for ninety-nine years, well, that's good. That's good for the town. And if they're not successful, they just ate all that five million dollar building and the town owns it. So please find a way to just make that, let them do what they are trying to do for us. Thank you.
Thanks, Charles. Aaron?
Director of New Explorers. Every week or every other day, I get an email from a family before their child is born, before they know what sex it is, they're on the survey and get on the waitlist. And it's exhausting. Every week, every other day, it's, I have to put your name, you're on the waitlist, blah, blah, blah. And it's, it's unbelievable. So please let this happen.
Thanks, Karen.
Hello, I'm Ariel Gustafson and my daughter Neva goes to New Explorers. And the amount of enrichment, intention, care, learning that I see every day in her is incredible. And so many of her peers are on the waitlist and not getting that. And their moms are homeworking or home watching them, not able to go to work. Um, and for a thousand square feet to like take that enrichment and learning away from our future community members just seems like a waste. Um, yeah, we need our young people to, to get what New Explorers offers, um, because it's super important for them to grow and be good members of our community. So I urge you to vote yes on this.
Thank you.
This feels familiar. Uh, my name is Laura Solbray. I live in Nederland. I'm off of Magnolia. I've had a, I've worked at the school for a long time. Most of you know that. Um, my son was lucky enough to be with Karen and Lisa for two and a half years. He just graduated kindergarten today. Um, and we haven't forgotten how important having NELC to take care of him so that both of us could work was not only to our family, but also to the community. Um, I've said this before, but I think it's important to remind everyone that the need for this um, facility isn't only about early childhood care. It's impacting all the other services and care that the town provides. We have lost quality teachers at the elementary school and at the secondary school simply because they didn't have childcare. Um, and that's just one example. When you think about other community services, um, anybody who is, has a family and has a job probably needs NELC at some point or another. Um, so this being a community issue, not just a young families issue, um, is important to remind everyone of, about. Um, I do want to make sure that we recognize the work that Stephen has done. Um, this isn't his expertise, but he has really taken this on and what he's done for the community in the past two years is nothing short of commendable. Um, he saw the need and he ran with it, even though he's admitting tonight, I made some mistakes along the way. Um, he's really done an outstanding job and he deserves the support of all the layers of the community with any bumps in the road. And if this is about some square footage, let's figure out as a town quickly how we can figure it out and get behind this project moving forward in June. Instead of pointing fingers or making it a big deal, let's just get together and figure it out. That's where the project is. It's been supported by so many different people in so many different ways. It's important for the town to move forward on this. Um, and just to back Stephen up on some of the square footage issues, um, there is a tremendous amount of licensing requirements that go into any. that go into any type of early childhood center. So a lot of the building and the space and the particular rooms, that really wasn't about a particular design. That was about them using the particular space that was available in town and working probably tirelessly with the designers to use that space, move as quickly as possible, but also make sure that they were meeting the license requirements, which varies for each individual age group, like the size of the room, the size of the bathroom, the measurement of how tall the toilet is off the floor. It's different for each individual age group and space within the center. So to keep all of that aligned for licensing purposes and the legality side of it, if there were some other bumps along the way, let's figure it out.
Thank you. Appreciate it, Larissa. Any other folks in the room have any public comment? If not, we'll go to folks online. Anyone online with a public comment about Teens Inc. amendment to the lease? Sam?
Hey, this is, can I go ahead, Billy?
Yeah, go ahead. Yeah, you're good.
This is Sam at 256 Bonanza Drive over on Ridge Road. My wife and I have one child that's two and a half and then another one on the way. And so we're just in full support of this adjustment and whatever they need to get this thing done, we're fully supportive behind it. And pretty simple there.
Thanks, Sam. Congratulations.
Thank you.
Other comments for folks online? Go ahead, Eric.
My name's Eric Ellison. I live at 99 Carroll Court in Gilpin County. My nine-month-old Orly, nine-month-old daughter Orly is on the waitlist for the Teens Inc. Childhood Center when it exists. We needed infant care for our daughter nine months ago. We're not going to have it. She'll be a toddler by the time this center is built. I think the town should recognize that a facility is serving only 65 children and only 10 infants is actually not big enough for the need in the community. And what is probably would best serve the community is a center that is bigger than 9,616 square feet, not one that is smaller to the tune of 8,600 square feet. So I think my understanding of the timeline here is that the town of Netherland voted for a facility that would serve 65 children. They did not understand at the time that the facility would be 8,600 square feet. I think you should follow the will of the voters and make sure that this building is equipped as best as it can to serve 65 children the best it can. I think that is the best way to serve the community. This is going to have effects that ripple through every aspect of the community. I think the last thing I wanted to mention. Nope, lost it. Thank you.
Thanks, Eric. Other folks online? Public comment? Alex?
Hi, thank you, everybody. My name's Alex McGavick. I'm a resident of Netherland. We're in a very similar boat, I'm sure, as many other people are because it is apparent to myself and I'm sure everybody else there that the demand for this is through the roof. And the supply has not been there. It hasn't been an available situation for many families over the years. And they're coming up with creative solutions to find childcare. Of course, you know, my wife and I have a two-and-a-half-year-old son as well, and we have a two-month-old daughter. So we would love to have the opportunity to utilize this service and this, this, this great opportunity to provide this to the community, I think, is above and beyond. So we're in full support of what Teens Inc. is trying to do here. And I hope everybody there on the board is in agreement and can push this along. That's all I had to say, but thank you for your time.
Thanks, Alex. More public comment? Hi, Ray. Go ahead.
Hi, my name is Ray Vida. I live at 241 Alpine Drive with my partner Trevor and our 11th-month-old Enzo. I submitted an email not thinking I was going to be able to listen in tonight. I first just want to thank Teens Inc. and Stephen for all their hard work. And please ask the town to support this change. Currently, we have to send Enzo down to daycare in Boulder, which is quite a challenge for us. So it would be great if there was an option in the town so that way we could raise Enzo in the community. Thank you.
Thanks, Ray. Any other folks? Go ahead.
This is Lisa Mayhew speaking. I'm Orly's mom. And I just wanted to also emphasize that what Ray happened to just say at the end of her comment there that we were choosing to raise Orly here in this community. And we, in order to do that, we need to have childcare in this community. So I've also had to go to Boulder for my older child for childcare. And it doesn't create the kind of community that we're looking for. It makes friends down in Boulder. It feeds into activities in Boulder. And that's not what we're looking for. We're looking to stay connected to our Netherland community and more broadly, Rollinsville and the area by, by being able to have childcare here where we live, where we choose to live and invest our time and our, and our money and our children's futures. So please consider that.
Thanks, Lisa. Other comments? Galen? Galen? Galen, go ahead.
Thanks. I appreciate it. My name is Galen Calligan. I am also a Netherland mother. We have a one-year-old son. My husband and I live over on Beaver Creek Drive. And I will keep it short and sweet, but I can't possibly vocalize enough how much we would support this amendment and doing whatever it takes to get this childcare facility moving on time and available to the public. It's been, like many of my neighbors, it's been very challenging for us to find childcare options for our one-year-old. We would love to expand our family. We love the town of Netherland. But it's incredibly challenging when we are having to either commute down to Boulder. We're looking for or on waitlist with multiple nanny shares within the town. I think it would, it would benefit so many families and it would really benefit this community to move this project along as quickly as possible. And I just want to vocalize as much support as I possibly can. Thank you.
Thanks, Galen. Other folks online? Public comment on this amendment? Okay, anyone else in the room? Okay, if not, we'll go ahead and bring it back to the board.
It's a one-note. I did make a mistake on my math. I think I doubled it in my calculator or something, but it is 10.5. That's the percentage increase.
Okay, great. Thanks, Kate.
I'd love to go first here. Things that would need to go into an infant room. Cribs, diaper-changing tables, hand washing stations, storage for diapers and wipes, sanitizing stuff, high chairs, bottle warmers, refrigerators, soft areas for crawling. I worked in a early childcare facility when I was very young. And that room, the only reason I know this is because we were looking at an expansion at one point. That room was 600 square feet, and it just barely fit everything that we needed for infants. Because while they're eating, then staff is actually overturning and making sure that their beds are ready and the cribs are ready, there is a lot of motion that is going on. So to see 566 square feet for an infant room, I'm sorry, but that's not overly crazy. And especially when you have children and you have children that have gone to preschool, you want to walk in and you want to feel like that is a great room for your children. So that's my first point. Second point. It is a little embarrassing, and thank you for your apology, and I appreciate that, Stephen. It is a little embarrassing to come back to the public and say, you know, oh, but hold on, we got to revise this, this lease. However, there's also a couple of other numbers I want to throw at everyone. The square footage of this property of 750 West Fifth Street is 20,152 square feet. The vacation of Fifth Street right-of-way added an additional 10,000 square feet. The total square footage that this building is taking up is 32%. When you compare that to the rest of our zones, medium-density residential is at 20%, high-density residential is at 30%, neighborhood commercial is at 40%, Central Business District is NA, but it would be up to 100%. General Commercial is 40%, Industrial is 40%. This is zoned public. Legally, it could go up to 100%. The square footage of this building is 32%. In comparison to the rest of our zones, that's considered on the lower end. The last note that I'll make is that this impact spans more than I think, and I agree with some of the folks who are in public comment, it's more than just a childcare facility. It reduces familiar stress, family stress. It impacts economic development. And I'm going to pull on one sector here, and that is the women in our community. Yes, we have many parents that are men, but disproportionately, childcare has the effects to close the gender gap from a working perspective, from career gaps. And not having that childcare available, women are forced to make decisions of like not going back to work, even though they would like to. And we've heard those stories over and over again. And I want to be able to recognize caregiving as a social responsibility. Like, we all are invested in it. Tom, what you were talking about of, you know, everyone going up through the ranks and eventually seeing them graduate, that's important. I will be voting yes to move forward on this.
Ace the call.
Yeah. First of all, I just want to disclose I do work for Teens Inc. as a handyman, just so it's known. I will say, I'm not, I'm not going to call it sloppy, but I really wish you had reviewed this because it's such a huge thing. Come to us with very precise numbers. But you apologized for it and you owned it. And that is a lesson that everyone can take, is own your mistakes. I will say, I've had a child in New Explorers, and we tried to get her back in, but it was totally full. And I had to completely alter how I work. I stayed home. Tom said it well. That's where it starts. You know, we want children to want to be in this community, have fond memories of being in this community. And that's absolutely where it starts. So you will be getting a yes from me as well.
Hello, Tierney.
Hello. Nicole, I don't think I could have said it better myself, so I'm just going to echo what Nicole said. I also do want to point out, just so that we're all really clear, and I want to make sure I'm clear myself. In the ordinance that we passed, 859, we approved the SRU that was based on that application that Stephen was talking about. And that included a site plan of just over 10,000 square feet.
10,091.
Thank you. And the referendum ballot question referred to ordinance 859, which incorporates that site plan. So that vote that people went to and that over 70% vote in support of Teens Inc. was supporting that site plan. So I think we saw from the community, both from the comments here and from the referendum vote, an overwhelming support for this project. And, and I think it all makes sense. And I appreciate you coming here, Stephen, today. And I know that this has been a long, long process. And thank you for sharing everything with us today and for, you know, detailing how this happened. But we're here now, and I think the next step forward is to amend the lease and to just keep moving forward. I think we do, I do want to recognize that we did get a few comments from people expressing their concerns. And I understand that and I hear that. I hear the concern about the footprint in that community. But I think when we weigh all of the circumstances here, the circumstances we've weighed, we have weighed before, the need for childcare in our community, the overwhelming support that we've consistently seen, the fact that childcare is essential, not just for young families, but for our community as a whole. I know Nicole mentioned economic development, and I think that that is definitely true. Families will leave if they cannot get childcare. And then we will see that impact our schools, which I think that we've already started, we've already seen. And that needs to change. So we need, we need childcare. And I think this is, this is the way to get it as quickly as we can. That's where I'm at.
Thanks, Tierney. Tanya and Chris?
Yeah, I'm happy to speak. I want to thank everybody else for speaking and all the great points made. My initial response when I heard about the discrepancy was, well, just shrink every room a little bit. But I realize now, after seeing the requirements and that, you know, you're basically at the bare bones of what each space needs to be. That's not possible. And it would be far worse to build a location that isn't functional or meets the needs of community for going to all this effort and all this expense. So I am in favor of continuing, renewing amenity, at least, and allowing this project to move forward. I mean, I am a mother of a 17-year-old now. And at the time, we had two preschools. We didn't have infant care, but it was never really an option or not an option. It was never a concern about waitlist and not getting your kid in. Every, everybody got in. And then it was actually three, if you include the one at the elementary school. So I feel for all the parents right now and not being able to earn a living, go to work, raise your family in your community and having to move because of it. It's not good for anybody. It's really not good for the town of Netherland. And that's what we're here for as Board of Trustees, is to support the town. And so I support the project. Thank you.
Thanks, Tanya. Chris?
Yeah, I want to, like others have said, I want to thank Stephen for owning up. I'm, you know, it, my concern is not with the facility. My concern is with the appearance of how this is moving forward and with how this, or how this reflects upon the Board of Trustees. Because at every step along this way, we've been told that we need to rush, we need to hurry, and we need to move quickly for one reason or another. And these are the mistakes that get made due to that. It's why we shouldn't be making a lot of our decisions regarding this, this under emergency ordinance as we have in the past. It leads to mistakes. It leads to not enough people getting eyes on the documentation and which might have caught this. And if it had been caught early, fine, it's, you know, it's in the lease. I understand that and I agree with that. But it just, it, it, you know, it sets a very bad and sour tone for a project in the community where this was one of the primary concerns raised was the, the size and sort of the haphazard approach to it. And then very, the very first thing we see is an increase in size and in a sort of a, oops, we made a mistake. We're actually meaning this, a kind of a bait and switch kind of thing. I don't think it was that, but that's the appearance we're getting. And that's my bigger concern is the process and why we should not be trying to rush these things through. I think even tonight, we've heard other reasons to be concerned about that. Because when Tanya asked about the path along the creek, we're hearing that the, you know, the project manager, Stephen, isn't aware that that was a necessary part of the SRU. And he is corrected by his team, which is good. That's why you need multiple people. But even there, we are an uncertainty about what's actually required by the applicants. But even there, we are an uncertainty about what's actually required by the applicants. So that is my biggest concern, I totally support this, I've spent my entire life in the educational realm, my entire career in the educational realm. And there is nothing more important than education from all the way up, from, you know, from birth to, well, birth to death. You know, we never should stop that process. We just need to be careful as a town that we're not putting ourselves, you know, in a position where we're the ones looking bad because we're trying to rush. Thank you.
Thanks Chris. So yeah, I, um. Appreciate you apologizing, it is what it is, I kind of will put some. Responsibility on your professional team that should have been doing their job a little more proactively. And. Ultimately, I, I am also sensitive to the fact that, that, that there are people in the Dyer's neighborhood and, and others around the community that. That A, didn't want it in first place, B, you know, didn't like the size of it and have struggled with the project along the way and then did a referendum and twenty-eight percent of them voted against it. So it, I want to recognize that that kind of, uh, you know, opinion about this, this project and the size of it, i- is what it, you know, is, is. Here and it's valid and, and this, everyone deserves their opinion on this. And, um. So that was where my frustration with the change is, is just like the, the optics and the challenge of going from. What I already thought was a pretty large building to a larger one, even though it was the same building, but like the optics is the thing, especially for those, that twenty-eight percent and the people who didn't, don't want it there at least. That said, the inertia of building this is kind of undeniable and, um. I personally think we need two of these, if we ever buy this ski area, I'd like to put one right up there too, for, for workforce, not for tourists. So, um, the same size, cause we need a hundred and thirty beds, you know, or whatever cuts. So, I, yeah, I ultimately will vote in favor of this amendment. And, um, I, and we also did for sake of expedience and, and kind of coming to the discussion. We have some motions that we prepared, so if, if we were to move it, I, I guess I move, help me with the language. I move to move this discussion item to an action item.
Second.
Macy?
Trustee Larson.
No.
Trustee Maris.
Yes.
Trustee Ty.
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem Sterling.
Yippers.
Trustee Corvalon.
Yes.
And Mayor Billy.
Yes, and, and I'm gonna, I appreciate Chris's vote, cause he does speak for more than just one person. But, you know, I think the ratio is reasonable too, so with that, we'll move this to an action item. Um, and we need to go through.
Sorry Billy, I'm just curious what you mean, I speak for more than one person?
Well, you speak for yourself, but you represent an opinion that goes beyond one person, I'm sorry. You represent, you know, twenty-eight percent of a vote.
And, and to be clear, I just voted on whether or not this should be moved to an action item.
Okay, yeah, yeah, good point. That's true. Thank you. So, just a little procedure, we, we would need. We, we're pretty much here with the content, any clarifying questions, public comment? And, and then motion discussion?
Well, I think you already had your, your public comment, I think that the public comment can serve.
Okay.
For your action item. There's a couple of ways that you could go about doing this, if you're looking to amend the ground lease. One way is you can have an amendment drafted and brought back for, uh, the next meeting and put on the consent agenda. Or another way is you could delegate authority, say, to Mayor Billy to sign a contract amendment to amend the lease. To allow for an increase in building size to ninety-six sixteen square feet. Or, or whatever you decide, if you want to give a little wiggle room, I don't know.
Do you care one way or the other?
I don't.
Then I would like to make a motion.
Me, which way I can, I can give you a motion?
Okay, I want to make the motion to have Mayor Billy sign the contract, the revised, with the revised, um, square footage.
Okay, so that would be a, I move to approve a delegation of authority for Mayor Billy to sign a contract amendment to the ground lease. In a form approved by the town attorney. To allow for an increase in the building size to.
Can we put that up on the, on, on the big screen?
Hold on.
There you go.
So moved.
So moved.
She's not done.
Okay, so I did have to allow an increase in the building size to nine thousand six hundred sixteen feet, if that's what you. That's what you want to do.
Got it, okay, yes, so moved, okay.
Do you guys want me to restate it?
Yeah, please, just, just.
For clarity sakes.
So I moved to approve a delegation of authority for Mayor Billy to sign a contract amendment to the ground lease. In a form approved by the town attorney to allow for an increase in the building size to nine thousand six hundred sixteen square feet.
And, just to make sure, that is correct, because it says ninety-six hundred in the aim, but it is nine thousand six hundred sixteen, can we just be, can we just be for sure on that? Okay, let's just, you know, let's just wrap this up in good old fashioned form.
Um, Greg or Rick, can you just confirm the square footage, please?
Yeah, I, I can do that, nine, nine thousand six hundred sixteen square feet is correct, um, for the current, uh, square footage. That, I, I will say that it might be worthwhile to not have it exactly at that square footage. We, we still have yet to, um, pass permitting, the permitting approval process. And there is a possibility that that square footage may need to be slightly adjusted, um, in order to address the permitting comments. But it, I, I will definitely say it won't be by much. You know, I, I would think even matter of maybe fifty square feet or something would give us a little bit of room like that was mentioned earlier. Some wiggle room, if you will, to address any potential comments.
Hey John?
Does ninety-seven hundred do it, or do you think you need?
That would be, that would be fine, I think, yes.
Are you sure?
I'm glad we asked.
Fine answer. Do not want to freaking do this again.
Do this again.
Okay, so ninety-seven hundred. Would seal the deal.
Does that, I mean, really from a zoning perspective, does that potentially account eighty-four square feet for some kind of changes that might need to be made through permitting?
We have determined that under ten thousand square feet does not constitute a material change that would require an amendment to the SRU. So I think as long as we're under the ten thousand, we're good from the land use perspective.
Okay, but for the purposes of the lease, ninety-seven hundred?
That, that's good.
Okay.
As long as it's good for you.
So do you need to restate it with the ninety-seven hundred square feet?
So I move to approve a delegation of authority for Mayor Billy to sign a contract amendment to the ground lease. In a form approved by the town attorney to allow for an increase in the building size to nine thousand seven hundred square feet.
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion, a second. Any other, any other discussion? Okay, go ahead.
Okay, um, trustee Ty.
Yes.
Trustee Maris.
Yes.
Trustee Larson.
Yes.
Mayor Billy.
Yes.
Trustee Corvalon.
Yeah, yes.
Thank you, and Mayor Pro Tem Sterling.
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you, everyone. Appreciate, appreciate your work on this. Thanks for coming back and, um, thanks to Brett for pointing out this discrepancy. Thanks for y'all for your comments and for being here tonight for this.
Yeah, great to see you. Yeah, I, I will echo what trustee Tierney just said, it's great to see you again, but don't come back.
Come back, come back, come back, just not for the.
Just not for this.
Yeah, other stuff, you're, you're good.
When you build another one, come back for that. Thank you all, um, with that, we will go to our second, um, this, sorry. Second discussion item of the evening, the usage of bag fee revenue, potential ordinance amendment.
Hi, um, this is Cass, hi, this, um, Cass is sustainability coordinator and I'll be presenting this item tonight. So by now, I'm sure you all are a bit more familiar with the bag fee. We still have not yet enforced this, um, because of giving, just providing time to retail stores to, um, get their system in place for that. However, we have been receiving more bag fee revenue. And we are looking for direction from the BOT on how you would like the, um, revenue that is collected. To be used within the allowable activities related to waste diversion. So in the House bill, um, that initially kind of started this, um, bag fee change for us up here, because we did have a bag fee. Back in twenty fifteen, um, but the House bill says that, um, the municipalities may use the bag fee. To pay for like administrative enforcement costs and then also any recycling, composting or other waste diversion programs. That are related to outreach and education activities. And so in our ordinance eight six two, that outlines the, um, bag fee. Rule, um, we have a, we have allowable uses listed out. And some of these actually have already been done, like the first one is provide reusable bags to residents and visitors. And then that was something that, um, the town has done, has created reusable bags and provided them. Um, and then there's also other items such as education, funding, programs and infrastructure that reduces waste. Purchasing installing equipment designed to minimize bag pollution, including recycling containers and waste receptacles. Funding community cleanup events and other activities that reduce litter. Maintaining a public website that educates residents on the progress of waste minimization. And then funding the administration of the disposable bag fee program. So far, the town has received just over seven hundred dollars for quarter one, twenty twenty-five bag fees. The majority of this came from the market at Nederland and that is not surprising, knowing that they, you know. Are the biggest kind of distributor of bags to customers. If we continue with this, um, remittance, we will see almost three thousand dollars from four quarters of remittance. So that's kind of what we can expect in terms of how much money we'll be working with. So tonight, what we are wondering is within those, um, activities that I listed. What does the BOT kind of want to prioritize in terms of using this fund, this, this money, um, that will be, you know, close to three thousand dollars by the end of the year? So once it's kind of, we're not probably going to be spending any right now, but like, once we've gathered some funds, um, from that. Uh, program, then we just kind of want to know what is ideally, um, the activities you want to spend it on. What I recommend, um, is activities such as town cleanups and monitoring of zero waste efforts at events. I think would be very impactful, especially with, um, creating behavioral change. Uh, and I think that would be biggest, um, impact is when people actually change how they recycle. Or to recycle in the first place, um, or to compost in the first place. Those sorts of changes are going to have the biggest impact compared to, um, you know, other ones like just handing out reusable bags. So, and, and then just wanted to point out that education is like integral to all of these efforts. Making sure people are aware of what can be recycled here, um, and then hopefully changing behaviors in terms of what they choose to, um, purchase in the first place. And so, yeah, I will go with the question, how does the BOT want to spend the revenue from the bag fee? Based on the allowable activities listed in, uh, section seven one five one of ordinance eight six two.
Thanks Cass. Clarifying questions for Cass?
Just Cass, um, real quick, so the education, is that already have a budgeted line item to it?
So we do not, um, have a line item that I'm aware of for this. And part of the ordinance is, uh, says that, um, this has to be used specifically for these activities. It can't be used just for like the general fund. Um, and so I think this, um, this question that we're asking would basically be to, uh, create this line item. And, and what it should be used for.
Okay, but just to clarify, there's no education line item that is already dedicated for, um, for some of this zero waste. Or anything like that, what are your suggestions? Because you said into, you said education was sort of just riddled throughout it, but there's no line item, there's no budget dedicated to education right now.
I, I don't believe there is, I checked with, um, with Rita and our accountant and did not, um, yeah, John, do you have?
No, you're right.
Okay.
That's correct.
Could you tell us what a common use of this fund is used for with other? Municipalities?
Yeah, um, so I think kind of the biggest thing is municipalities are spending it on specific staff, actually, to run this kind of program. But these, you know, those municipalities are larger, um, and so they're also getting more in terms of bag fee revenue. Um, I believe other municipalities are, um, spending it on, you know, educational resources, so like the printing costs. And as well as, uh, I believe there have been like compost, um, collection projects. So just like building more infrastructure to collect, um, recycling. Um, I know like some municipalities don't, uh, necessarily collect glass and single stream recycling. And so like specific glass. Like recycling containers are, are things that like would fall under the infrastructure kind of, um, activity. But I know that like with our specific transfer station, our single stream does collect glass containers. And, you know. Most of, uh, that probably isn't like something that like the town needs to be concerned with. Um, one thing that we did kind of have an idea for, and this would be something that we'd bring back. To the BOT before applying, but for that C three grant that we were talking about earlier, um, we were considering. Doing a restaurant compost collection program, so that would involve, you know. Buying a dumpster, uh, a bear proof dumpster, um, and then like compost containers or food organics collection containers for all the restaurants in town. And then they could dump their, um, food organics into the dumpster and then we would transport that up to the transfer station. And so like those kinds of like costs associated with that type of program, I think would have like a really, really big impact.
Thank you.
More clarifying questions?
Uh, this is Tanya up online, I want to say yay to that last idea about the restaurant composting program. It, I love that direct action result driven initiative, um, and I. Sure there'll be some education that gets involved with the restaurants to make sure they don't put the incorrect things in the bin. But I feel like that would be of most use to the community. And I would be in favor of that if you guys were in favor of that, but I think ultimately. We would probably leave it in your guys' hands to bring us the ideas specifically like that, it's such a great idea, I love it.
Thanks Tanya. Chris?
No clarifying questions, no.
Okay. I don't have any either, so, um, that will go to public comment. Anyone have a public comment on, on the, on the? Use of the plastic use fee, plastic bag fee, I'm sorry. There are none. We'll bring it back to the board, and I just want to ask the question, how does the BOT want to spend the revenue from the bag fee based on the allowable activities listed in Section 7-151 of the, of Ordinance 862?
Well, I want to spend it on a restaurant composting program.
Awesome.
I really like that idea too, that, you know, I've worked in restaurants, my only issue is that you're moving fast, like all the time, and I don't want that compost to get rejected because they put the wrong thing in there because they were moving fast. I do like, I was just reading through this, I like the idea of providing reusable bags to residents and visitors.
Say, Nederland?
Yeah, yeah, I guess I have, there's a little bit of a clarifying question I've got with that. You know, Cass, you had suggested that, that maybe wasn't the best impact piece, but could that generate revenue that you could then put back into your coffers to do continued work in this space?
If we were to sell them like at the visitor's center, then absolutely. I, I just think that most people have access to reusable tote bags. I know that those are common, you know, swag items given away at things, and while like having those bags is the first step, like remembering to bring them with you to the grocery store, to any store that you go to, is like going to have the bigger impact. And so, like, yes, I think it is a great idea, and having, you know, funds from that could definitely, you know, amplify our funding for other projects as well.
And we wouldn't want to just put it in the visitor's center, we would want this to go into other businesses, BNF, the marketplace, you know, I mean distribute it wide into, and we can start small as a pilot, but I just, you know, I'm thinking like resiliency and ongoing income for you all as well, as well as the educational component. So that's just, so just to riff off your idea, Ty.
Yeah, I agree with Chris. I agree with Tanya and Ty. I think, you know, the impact is going to be in the, the business realm, and if we can find a way to, you know, as Ty says, you know, do composting without it being rejected due to, you know, a mistake, speed of it, I think that's where we have really, we can make an impact. It's a missing piece currently. There's lots of places to get reusable totes, and most of us probably have more totes than we know what to do with as it is. Like Cassie said, it's just a matter of remembering them. But, you know, we could do something new and different with the business aspect, and we should, you know, this funding stream is probably going to remain, at least for a few years, until people start actually changing behavior and phasing out their use of single-use bags. But we have sort of a consistent funding stream that could help support the business composting.
What up, John?
One thing that, just to add for your discussion, one thing you could do is if there's like two or three alternatives for Cass to look at, from my perspective, I think the biggest impact we can have on sustainability is sustaining Cass's salary, and she's partially grant funded right now, and I think what we've been trying to do is build some structure in our staffing, in our, in our funding sources with the sustainability fee that we have to build her into a full-time position. We just found out from Boulder through Cass's work that we can use our Boulder grant one more year to support her salary, but we do want to like bring her on, you know, keep this work going. And I have, think having a full-time staff member to do that is really good. So I think one thing that should be under consideration is whether that could be used in part at least to support her admin work that she's done to set this program up.
Awesome. Well said.
And, but with, with that, like if there were multiple recommendations, I mean, have we done any feasibility or any analysis in terms of what a business composting program would actually cost? Because I'm guessing it'd be more than what we're going to pull in in a year for this.
Right, and there's the grant that Cass had mentioned, but that's like a, you know, time limited funding. And the other thing, Cass, do you want to talk about the recycle, that organization that we had also talked about just a little bit?
Yes. Would it be all right if I shared my screen?
Yes.
Okay, awesome. I will pull this up. So the, the organization that was brought to our attention is Recycle Colorado, and I have worked with a number of the members. I've heard from the executive director in a presentation, and so I'm somewhat familiar with it, but essentially it is an organization that is, it's a nonprofit, and they work together to bring in stakeholders and try and advocate for policy at the state level, and and let me just like pause for one second while I pull up my screen. Hard to do two things at once. Are you able to see my screen?
Yes.
Okay, great. So as you can see, these are the different membership levels, and it has a bit more information on the benefits of being in this organization, but it includes more than just municipalities, it includes businesses, producers, haulers, and other nonprofits, and there's different membership levels. The municipal membership levels that are listed here go from $1,500 to $5,000, and this would be per year, and you get different numbers of registrations for their summits, like their conferences, and then their annual meetings, as well as just recognition. I think for many businesses, this recognition is very important for a municipality such as Nederland. I'm not sure that the same like recognition is going to, you know, help us in the same way. We would, you know, benefit from having connections to the, the network and the different, you know, other members that are there. And then we would also benefit, I think, from, you know, networking at the summit, but I, I think this could be a good membership once we have like more funding coming in from the bag fee, so it could be something to like keep on the radar.
Agreed. Yeah, I don't think this is like an immediate thing.
But yeah, this would be an example of something else that we could, you know, spend that bag fee funding on.
Thank you. Tom, did you want to make a comment about that, about something?
Yeah, a comment and an offer on the recycling side. When, when the new administration came in, our food went off the deep end pretty fast. We've started going straight to the grocery stores on Sundays to pick it up, but when we go to Whole Foods, it's take it all and, and be out of here. You got to take it all or take none. So we're bringing home a lot, a lot of produce. We got 1,800 pounds on Sunday that we brought up here. We're generating a lot of compost, and I, but we've got a nice piece of land on the edge of the, we, the food pantry, on the edge of the commercial district, and we might want to, we'd be happy to host a compost center on our property, and even we've got enough volunteers in place now to probably start picking it up from businesses, if that makes sense. I just wanted to throw that out there. We're putting new gardens in that go down to the river, and we're going to need that compost, we're going to use it right on site. That's it.
Thanks, Tom.
Wow, that's, that's a great offer. Maybe there's some networking you guys could do together to figure out, maybe that money could go towards helping them build those bear-proof compost facilities or something.
Would that be more of a purchase or a construction, Cass, John?
The dumpster, I think we were thinking that's a purchase item, but I think it's just a matter, you know, we just got to think about the bears, is I think the big thing, our potential for bears.
Bears.
Well, the bears and the, and the, yeah, and then the functioning.
Yeah, right.
Getting it to turn and actually be compost versus just a dumpster.
Keep in mind, composting with like restaurant waste, you're going to have a lot more of animal products, which are a different level of composting than sort of your typical vegetable compost.
Yeah, that's a great point. And right now, my, my thought process was working with the transfer station because they have that new composting unit where before they were collecting organics and then transporting it to A1 Organics out of the county, now they are actually, you know, doing that composting process on site, and then that compost is hopefully going to go back into the community. And so initially, I was thinking I need to work with the transfer station to make sure that, you know, the compost we're collecting is going to be acceptable. And that's, that's a really great point you made, Chris, of just like potentially having to can, like, consider what is going into that organics collection, and if that's appropriate for the composter up on site, or if we need to like make any other kinds of, you know, changes to that. And I, I believe like if we wanted to do like an entirely new composting like unit down in town, like that could be another option to use grant funding for. It would just, you know, require like, that would be more of a, I think, potentially a construction, to be honest.
How, how much compost are we expecting to get from the BioSalads project? Into the staff reports.
Yes, and I know Andrew has been in charge of, you know, that collection and distribution of those, of that compost.
Are we talking about the part that we're bringing back from?
Yeah.
I think we can bring back like a full dump truck every time, which I think is 200 tons, or no, that's not 200 tons, but we can bring back as much as we want. It's just like every load down is a load up.
Okay, I mean, you can't probably have too much composting, but it might just affect strategy, like do, you know, do we build something on site? Do we ship it? Do we, what do we do with it if we got a big old?
And Kat, Kat, there's a, part of this would be local compost, that there's a, there's a piece of that too, right? The local production of it?
Yes, yeah, keeping it like in the community. So the thing is that we already have the composting unit at the transfer station, and I would say the best thing to do first would be to determine if we can just, you know, piggyback on there, and then maybe there's some agreement where we could get, you know, the final product and use that for the community gardens. But I think that these are all like really great questions and ideas that kind of will go into a larger kind of feasibility study that I am working on. And so I don't really have all of the details worked out yet, but I do really appreciate all of the input.
I mean, I guess another, yeah, could be, I mean, I love that you're going to come back with the feasibility and how much it's all going to cost, and in the meantime, the money could just be saved for any matching grants that come up, or as John was saying, for, for salary purposes. So I mean, I mean, either way, it'll be spat.
We do something similar with our GOCO dollars that we get from the lottery funds, and so we just save those for a bigger recreation project, and that's how we handle that money.
So the question before the board is how do we want to spend, how does the BOT want to spend the revenue from the bag fee based on the allowable activities? So I, I mean, I'm hearing things that stray outside that list of allowable activities. Is that just a matter of us fix, you know, adjusting that ordinance?
Oh, what strays out of the list?
Payroll.
Okay.
So it's, you can charge an admin fee for that ordinance, so that's what I was thinking is, is just the, the running of that program.
On the administration of the disposal, okay.
All right, well, I mean, so the idea being, we've kind of discussed it, it sounds like Cass, you were going to go away and do a little bit more studying and then come back with a, an action item for us?
Yes, in terms of the, the potentially applying for the grant to kind of like get the seed funding for, for that restaurant composting program.
One thing that might help is a little direction, if any of these buckets sound interesting or not interesting to pursue, because what we could do is, as staff is kind of, as Cass is going through her feasibility work, if there's something you're not interested in, then are in those topics, we could come up with a couple of programs that fit these buckets, but I think that's really what we need to do is figure out what is the most appropriate general use of these funds, and then we can bring you back some more program specifics, probably.
Something that I, I like is the idea of these like town cleanups, like kind of the one-offs that we can continue to do, but they're kind of discreet. I guess plans and ideas versus a, a program that needs continued maintenance when we don't know how much money we're going to be making off of this long term. It just feels a little unpredictable, so I wonder if, if the kind of one-offs make more sense, just from a planning perspective and financial perspective.
Yeah, I mean, business composting, it sounds amazing. I'm just concerned how much it's going to cost.
And that's, you know, there's, there's some logistics that we have to figure out. I think you don't want to start a program like that that you can't maintain, to your point, so.
Yeah.
Yeah, I mean, it seems like coming from you, like one of the more, more useful ways to spend that money is on Cass's, you know, salary, you know, paying her. And, but I think this, you know, this cleanup events, you're right, it can kind of be like based on how much money we made, because it, it probably will be a moving target with, with just more, more retail.
I guess I could say I'm less excited about trying to promote behavioral change in the seven Rs of zero waste, and the only reason is because I usually, that makes me think of like, you know, educational like pamphlets and things like that, like that behavioral shift is harder to make, like people who are already recycling and doing the composting, it's a much harder lift to get the other folks unless you're, you're like really doing something that is in their flow of work, like you are disrupting and you can do that. So I'm, I'm less excited about things like that, education pieces, and would be behind, you know, either the one-offs or your salary, saving it for grants, things like that. Or we, or we have like a truly meaningful impact, something that we can do that's impactful, but we know what the costs are, and I just don't, we just don't know what the costs are, some of these things.
Yeah, I appreciate that perspective.
Some degree, the education, I mean, we live in Boulder County, so, so like it's already kind of in our face, you know, you know, we're kind of one of the late, late arrivals to do this with the bag, so. I mean, so I think the education is really not as needed as just something that's like your pay, or, you know, a solid event that really does some work for the town. Those are two I lean towards as well.
I mean, yeah, I, I don't want to get in the weeds here because I know we've got another big item, but another fun idea is, you know, like say at the market, which uses the most bags or the, you know, the co-op or places in town to have a bin of reusable bags that people refill so that we don't take bags.
I'm sorry, just because I wasn't there on Sunday, is it, do you guys, is there, is there a bag of some sort? Is there like a collection there? Are you saying that that would be something we'd put to mind? Is there like a collection there? Or are you saying that that would be something we'd put the money towards?
I was just kind of with another idea and it, and I mean, it would need some flushing out, but you know, like a, a a bin that would be full of reusable bags that people bring back and leave there and the community also refills. So that when people forget their bags, because it's, most of the time it's people who we just forget our bags. So it's not like we don't have a million at home. If there was some kind of cute program like a, like a, you know, like little free library type scenario, but it's the bag. But I mean, I'm, now that I'm saying it out loud, it sounds like more trouble if it's worth.
Chris, Ty, what y'all thinking? I already said, I, I didn't listen.
Are you picking on me for I said stuff?
No, and you're not listening.
So, do you, go ahead.
Yeah, I think the, you know, the, you know, trying to find a way to use it to support Cassidy, to, you know, the grant support or kind of the stretch goal being the, the business composting because that, you know, we'd have to have Cassidy go back and like determine what that's going to cost. Because I don't think it's going to be as cheap as any of us would like it to be. But I do think that is the place we might have the see, you know, a, the single greatest impact on our current trash stream that is not addressed.
I mean, would that be cheaper to do? I mean, I still lean towards either your, your pay or events, but like, would it be cheaper to just be paying someone as part of their job, you know, for the town to do a daily or whatever, so many times a week, run or to the rest, participating restaurants and then just drive it up to the transfer station versus building our own, another, you know, composting thing that really probably can't take all that be, you know, animal fat. Right, right, that we really make use of, of something that's already built and we just have a task basically that we're putting money towards that salary. I don't know, that, that to me seems like a more feasible way. They've already used this really great.
Yeah.
Thing they got, this, this new technology that's just right up the hill.
So the restaurants have five gallon buckets that they, they're interested in participating in, that get picked up, it would have to be daily.
Once one way or the other, they'd have to choose in, so yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, and I I'll be doing a survey of all the restaurants in Netherlands and just determining like who is interested in joining a program like that, what they would be willing to do in terms of like dropping it off at a dumpster them um, bringing it up to the transfer station themselves or um, yeah, if they would like only do it if someone were to pick it up from them. Um, and then any other like barriers that they might anticipate. Um, and all those things would definitely influence like the, yeah, the infrastructure or things that we would choose to buy for a program like that.
Are, are we requiring restaurants to have compostable products? And there's plates, because I know we require that of the food trucks that come in town and the events that come in town.
So Sab has definitely talked about that um and that we do not require it and that's because previously like the compost collection at the transfer station. Um, they didn't uh collect compostable products, it was just food. Um, and then the current composting unit, I believe they're still sticking with the same kind of guidelines of not uh allowing compostable products yet. I did hear from Boulder County that they are considering like allowing that in the future, but I think what they're concerned about is people um composting uh things that aren't actually compostable or like there, there is now a law um for compostable packaging. Um, like correct labeling, so like you can't put compostable on it if it's not actually compostable because a lot of companies do that. Um, and so, and then there's the other um aspect of the composting unit needs like a certain composition of um carbon and nitrogen and like if you have too much carbon from the um compostable products that might be like mostly paper, it could mess it up. So like I know that they're very like careful with that kind of like recipe. Um, and so I think there's like a lot of reasons why that hasn't like come to fruition.
Gotcha. Oh, that, that makes perfect sense.
Yeah, because like Billy up there was showing me, I'm like for one big like, you know, yard, whatever. Big garbage thing of compost that you kind of put out to your curb, you know, that kind of size. When that gets spilled in there, they put like five buckets of wood chips that are coming from across the street. So they're already putting tons of carbon into it. And it's, it, you know, part of keeping the packaging out is like, they just need nitrogen to balance in this case, all that wood that's going in with it.
Well, I think you have a lot to go on. I, I kind of like Billy's concept of the the restaurants themselves, like in the back of the house, just scraped all the food off the plates and put them in five gallon buckets and they got picked up daily. Maybe that'd be a good start, but I, even that seven hundred dollars isn't going to last with that. Um, so, well, it's something to think about. For a future considerations. As far as like, if you did do a feasibility study to know what all those options would cost so that if we did start getting more money or if you got more grants for something like that, I think there was interest from the board, I'm gathering, that's just myself, like everybody was kind of into it, but realized seven hundred dollars that we have right now is not enough, so. Maybe.
So Cass and John, are you?
Or Cass, I think we've got direction on a couple of good ideas. Are you feeling comfortable with moving forward with what you have?
Um, I believe so, and I, I think kind of the idea right now is we're not going to be spending the funds like immediately, um, but we do have, I, I do think that I hear some direction on what the consensus is for um, for what you prefer to spend the funds on.
Great. Great, thank you, Cass. Appreciate the presentation.
Yeah, thank you.
With that, we will go to our um third discussion item of the evening about a um establishing a local law enforcement agency.
Well, Mayor and trustees, this is a very long staff report. I know we're getting a little bit late in the evening, but I appreciate your hearing this topic. In our board um budget conversations last year, we did talk about whether or not we should prioritize the creation of a new local law enforcement agency in Netherlands and how that work might occur. And this staff report, what I tried to do is break down all of the different considerations that we really need to think about as that goes forward. I'm just going to kind of go through the executive summary of this staff report because it's very long, but I'm happy to answer questions that you have. Essentially, what this does is it breaks down the considerations. You know, currently we have a fifty percent service level from Boulder County Sheriff's Office, even though they're here likely more often because their office is here. Um, there are significant startup costs related to establishing a new law enforcement agency. And I think that we're probably talking somewhere in the range of one to two million dollars for that. Or probably a million dollars for the startup costs at least, and then maybe like one to two for operating budget, depending on how much staff we have. Um, I did break down some peer communities that have recently had challenges similar to Netherlands in terms of their policing. Um, and what they've done to kind of overcome them or not. I do think that one thing that we should really consider is that this is going to be a project that requires several things. Um, it's going to require expertise, it's going to require oversight and it's going to require dedicated funding of a fairly significant amount that we're going to have to really think about how we do that. And because I think of the, the requirements that we, you know, I, I feel like I, I have a pretty good understanding of what we're going to need to do, but one of the things that I recommended in the staff report is that either we hire someone who has the technical capability from a police administrative standpoint to set up this new department. Or we engage in a feasibility analysis that would include financial analysis and operational analysis to make sure that we do this properly. And there's several things I think that needs to include, including five and ten year models for costing and things like that. I think either way we go, we're, we'll probably be successful, but there are going to require a significant resource commitment. One thing I think that won't work is just hiring somebody like a marshal to be here. Because I think we need to make sure they're resourced properly and we have a plan for how that's going to work moving forward. So I think that if, if that's the route we're going to go, we need to make sure we give them the resources they need to build that department out. If we do the feasibility study, that could be another organization that does that. And there are people who do that and I've kind of been in contact with just briefly with a couple of them. And I'm guessing probably similar costs to what we paid for the comp plan, but it could be less, just depending on the scope. Um, if you have specific questions about my staff report, or you want me to dial in on any of the policy context here? The different laws that we're going to need to follow and comply with, some of which are different now, some of the body cam laws have changed. There's core requirements, evidence requirements, um inter-agency requirements, things like that. I'm happy to kind of talk uh or answer any questions you might have about that. I guess, one, sorry, one more thing. I guess the recommendation I'm making is that I think we need to do the feasibility study or have somebody do this. And the secondary question is when this would happen. Um, whether we want to do this work right now or we might want to do it and kind of consider it in our strategic planning that we're about to engage in.
What's the cost of the feasibility study?
I don't know yet because I need to build a scope for it, but I think it wouldn't be less than sixty thousand dollars and I don't think it would be more than two hundred and twenty thousand dollars. So I think it's somewhere in there, just depending on all the work we have to do.
John, um, and I loved your report, it was super detailed and um informative. The one thing that I wish it would have was a little bit more regarding BCSO. And what do we think their projected um costs are going to be year to year, like in five years? What do we, are we going to be paying them for the same service? I know we don't have a crystal ball, but like based on last year's increase from the year before. I guess there wasn't a year before, but um, because I think that's, that was the main catalyst besides, I don't think anyone's I mean, I'm personally not unhappy with the service being received from BCSO and plus I'm happy that, you know, you as town administrator have one less department to oversee. Um, but I am worried about the costs of not being in control of our department and at the whim of BCSO, not, uh, if they chose to double, triple, what would we be stuck? We're in a bad place. I feel vulnerable and I was one of the main advocates for going to BCSO once our um efforts didn't come to fruition. So that, that, do you have any insight on that?
Yeah, I did contemplate that in my staff report and it's under that hybrid. It's either the hybrid model or work more closely with BCSO. And I think that there's a couple of things that they're dealing with on their end that are driving their costs and one is providing their deputies a living wage in Boulder County. And that's, you know, we all understand that challenge. The other one is they really do need a new jail facility and that's something I know that they're really planning hard for. And then the final piece of that is just that the operational costs of a police department has increased exponentially, probably over specifically the last ten years. And so one of the things I said is that I think no matter what we do, we should be working with BCSO. Sergeant Mendez has been like absolutely wonderful to work with and she's really built something here that's a really good. It's functioning relatively well for Netherlands and I think we've really kind of fixed some of the early growing pains. And I think a ongoing conversation about that is something we really need to do. But there's, there's pieces of this that are tangential too. I think really looking at our co-responder program and how that works and, you know, that, that program responds in places that are not just Netherlands. And I think maybe there's some opportunity for shared costs if Boulder County is willing to do that. I also think we do have some challenges right now in terms of you know, with how we're structuring that contract, just looking at some of the things that our police department used to do. That isn't really expedient for the sheriff's office to do now. And it's more things like responding to potentially like a code complaint or something like that. And it just requires a higher degree of coordination. So one of the models I presented here is just enhancing that partnership. And just working with them to see how, if there's opportunities to lower our direct costs and our administrative burdens. And if we can access more resources, the sheriff's office. One that I am particularly interested in is some kind of more direct relationship with ODM, which is the Office of Disaster Management. And they coordinate all of that kind of work throughout the county and they will, you know, they're going to support us. But I think that there's a potential to more closely integrate our operations with theirs. And I think it, it would help us in a lot of ways to kind of have these conversations with them. The other thing is, is like, there may be opportunities to look at the way that our budget works and what they're able to provide us that are, we're not contemplating in the current contract, to your point. Where maybe we can really improve this local nature that I think Sergeant Mendez has really worked hard on this year to make sure the deputies are more visible in the community and just keep working on that in a way that is beneficial to us. I think that that model is likely our cheapest opportunity and it, it's possible that, you know, they may not know what our five year plan is. I think we can anticipate maybe not thirteen percent increases every year, but, but something like in the range of five to thirteen percent. So I think over time, we're going to get to the point where it's, you know, this is one of the biggest reasons that our budget has issues right now is because of the cost of this program. So I think no matter what we do, we should be working to make that as sustainable as possible. And the other thing with that is like revenue sources that can support this. One of the primary revenue sources we have right now is just the, the kind of the citation revenue they're generating through those extra duty shifts. But maybe there's other ways like working at events and things like that, that we can share in revenue too, that can support this office more. Or if there's other things that happen in town that give us the opportunity to create revenue. For this, maybe that's an option too, but um, I know that was a little bit of a rambly answer, but I think ultimately this is something we need to look at, no matter how we do, no matter what the model is, what that financial um horizon looks like for us.
Did that, did that give you some clarity? Anya? She's gone, I think, um. Yeah, I think, well, other trustees, other comments or clarifying questions?
I mean, I'm, I'm definitely interested in looking at, you know, how feasible that is. Uh, yeah. I'm, I'm in favor of that.
Chris?
Yeah, I think, you know, that, you know, seeing those numbers of what it would take to like, you know, let's spin up a new department, that's a bit of sticker shock. Um, and I think, you know, if we can find some way, at least in the near term to continue working or you know, to improve our relationship with BCSO, um, build that and while at the same time defining some better stability in our next few years cost. Then we might be in a better place in the near future to start looking at what does the five year horizon look like? And what are the needs of the town going to be, you know, two, three years from now? And what makes sense then is that the hybrid approach, is it building our own? Do we have funding sources to do so? Is it working with still with the county and doing, you know, some of the, some of the things I liked of yours was uh, the, some of the hybrid approach was let the county continue to do the, sort of the enforcement side where we get community policing and, you know, um, or the, the lower level policing efforts handled by a Netherlands department. I think there's some options there, but I definitely think it needs some more thought and planning and I, I don't quite know how to tag it because that is a incredibly detailed analysis you did, Jonathan, and really appreciate it. There's a lot to chew on there. And you know, even over the weekend, looking at it and prepping for this meeting, there's a lot of considerations that go into this.
Thank you.
Yeah, yeah, great, great work pulling this together, putting this together, um. Yeah, I mean, for me, I, I think this, look, you know, it's great to see different options away of looking at like hybridizing or using, staying with the sheriff's office or or using them to different degrees. I, I think, um, well, you know, they're doing, ultimately Boulder County Boulder County Sheriff's Office is really doing a great job. I think the part that got my attention last fall and still makes me wonder, and Tanya brought it up, and um, is, you know, what Sheriff Johnson said, he didn't say thirteen percent, he said a hundred and twenty thousand a year. And, and you know, he's kind of shooting from the hip with that number now, but like, we don't know. I mean, they're building a jail, that's going to be a massive cost and so to me, you know, like I don't think we have to, you know, make a decision necessarily this year, but like, um, looking ahead, if, if we're really at like a hundred and twenty thousand or even at like ten percent, you know, every eight to ten years, it's another million dollars. And then, you know, sixteen to twenty years later, it's, it's three million dollars and the other eight years, it's four million dollars. And then, you know, 16 to 20 years later, it's, it's $3 million and the other eight years, it's $4 million. My only concern with Boulder County Sheriff's Office is long-term control of cost. And that is where I think eventually whether it's a full department or a hybrid. We could control costs in the long term. I think in the short term, but you know, it's beating up our budget pretty hard, but like if it keeps growing. That's where it gets challenging.
There is COPS grants which do provide some of the funding that we could use for this. It's just the match requirement that we got to figure out. The other thing that's been on my mind is that Ward has a marshal as well. And there may be opportunities for regional collaboration where we could build something together. I've been doing a lot of research just on like sizes and I think like. One example that, just to, you know, draw on my own experience, Idaho Springs has nine officers, if you count the chief. And that's so that they can have 24/7 coverage with four people. So they have a sergeant with four, with three people under them. On the, on each of the sides of the shift and then they kind of overlap on one day of the week. And that is probably, I don't see us ever needing more than that. And we probably don't need a force of that size really. And their, their budget right now is like right at $2 million. And that's mostly just the, you know, equipment costs and officer costs, kind of, it's not, they're building a new PD right now, which is not associated with that. So I think that they have a similar call volume to what we probably have too. They have the highway, but we have more. I think a broader area that they would respond to in theory. So I think we could do more research about that too, but I think as we, what we really need to do, and that's why I think this feasibility work is important. We really need to, and this is where I think BCSO is a good partner to us too. And they've indicated that they would help us with these projects in the, in the future. But understanding what our force actually needs to look like to respond to our call volume and make sure that our officers would stay safe. I think that's a really critical thing. The other thing I wanted to mention here is I think our, our PD is a situation that we should talk about. We're in a leased building right now that we don't control. And it also isn't, it doesn't have all the safety features that you would really want in a police department or a sheriff's substation. So there may be opportunities where we could, you know, things like that, where we start improving the landscape around what we're doing. And either way, we're resulting in a better opportunity and better protecting the people who are serving our community.
I will say we had four officers, five, including the chief, but. It was pretty busy. Not that he didn't do any policing, but it was, it was a struggle sometimes to have just four. Uh, officers and that's all I'll say about that.
And I mean, one way or the other, whatever option we go with, we're impacted by the fact that, you know, the sheriff's department. Still needs to hire a bunch more people. There's still, to some degree, you made it sound like Curtis on some level wanted to get fired over the next few years because he wants to fill up his own force. But, you know, we will have that same problem here too, like we have to, whether we hybrid, stick with them and they, and they really can provide for us or do our own thing. You know, getting people on board and keeping them on board is going to be a challenge, no matter what, for everybody.
Do you think we could, with what we're paying now? I think we could drastically improve the salaries we were offering previously and like really. Probably almost come out at a wash because we've kind of accepted those salaries based on the structure we have now. But I think we're already. In some ways, our budget is already kind of like, it, it's prepping us for what that bigger budget might be over time, just to make sure we're supporting those people.
And if we had our own force, like we would, to some degree, we strive to hire very. Specifically for the types of people we want to be in the office. That said, public comment? No one's in the room, anyone online, any public comment? Mostly all us anyways. Okay, with that, we'll bring it back and. I'm having a hard time finding your questions before the board. I see your recommendations. Are they, are they, it's funny, I got thrown out somehow, I was, eyes were glazed over. Oh yeah, request for direction. So should the initiative proceed in 2025 or be deferred to a 2026 strategy, strategic planning? If yes, should staff price out feasibility, scope, research grants and identify qualified consultants? Number three, if the board supports continued exploration, does it prefer to proceed with a consultant-led feasibility study or initiate the recruitment? Of a qualified law enforcement leader empowered and funded to lead this work? If we proceed with this work, should staff begin exploring grants? That help pay for this effort, including grants that require a significant town match? Are there key outcomes or models that the board wants prioritized? Does the board have a preferred community engagement approach if this moves forward? So let's go to the first one, like. This doesn't seem brutally urgent, but at the same time, you know, worth. Worth answering the first question, you know, should this initiative proceed in 2025 or be deferred to a 2026 strategic planning? And when you say that, do you mean, talk about in our, in our planning that will happen this year for the next year?
Yes.
Or, okay, yeah, the way it was written, I wasn't sure if you meant, or is it?
Yeah, and I think that's the discussion part that. I've probably feel the most passionate about is like, this is a very strategic thing. It should 100% be debated in a strategic plan because there are other priorities. That we may say actually take. That actually take higher priority over this and we need to weigh all of the things together. Rather than just make one decision on this particular, very highly strategic thing. So I would suggest that. We stop the conversation and roll this into our strategic planning process.
Yeah, because. Go ahead. I mean, to the degree, in doing that, the other four questions kind of fold into the, you know, they would, they would be talked about later.
Yeah.
I, I agree with Nicole on that. The only thing I would say is I would also encourage Jonathan to, you know. Keep an ear open and for all staff, to keep an ear open for the possibility of the grants. If there are grants that might, you know, especially those that don't require a high match, that might help us, you know. Move ahead with the evaluation. We should always keep an eye open for that.
Definitely.
Okay. The other thing I just wanted to note is Jennifer, Sergeant Mendez and I have a really good working relationship now and we're going to continue to work together. To make sure our current arrangement is working. She's been, I can't. I can't really understate how awesome she's been working with our community. And I think she came in. Under some heat just because things hadn't quite worked great in the beginning and she's done nothing but stabilize and make things work well. And her deputies have been awesome. So I think that's the other piece is if we do move this into strategic planning. We'll continue working together and just optimizing things as we can.
Other folks, on your opinions on waiting for, you know, moving this to the strategic planning?
Yeah, it sounds like, I think at some point when we initially talked about this, you know, it was budget concerns and it was concerns about how, like. How the policing was happening, but it sounds like things are doing really well. So we still have the financial concern that hasn't gone away. But it sounds like it's not as urgent as it once was. And I think it makes sense to defer to, to the strategic planning.
Agreed.
Right. And to be clear, since Sergeant Mendez is on, it's not that Sheriff Johnson wants to get fired, but it just, how we took it was like. Subconsciously, he was like, this is going to get real expensive. And so, you know, also knowing that he was also, he is also working hard to fill his fours. So, so Jennifer, yeah, I don't actually think he wants to get fired, but everyone's trying to. Figure out their needs in a, you know, without enough people applying for the jobs basically. So do you have what you need, Jen? Oh, go ahead.
Sorry, I just wanted to comment. Yeah, the relationship with Jonathan has been fantastic and I appreciate your words. I, I completely understand where you all are coming from. We're just here to kind of be that support. You know, conversations down the line of hybrid. Absolutely. Those are open for conversations and I can definitely take those back to under sheriff and the division sheet and. We can have those conversations of what that would look like. But I respect and understand absolutely where you're coming from and by all means, me and the sheriff's office do not take that personally. We absolutely understand where you guys are coming from.
Thank you. John, you have what you need?
I do. I appreciate you guys reading that staff report. I know it was a little bit long, but I wanted to make sure I mapped it out as, as well as I could for what I know right now, so.
Thank you.
And I don't, and I don't think it's going to go away. So I think it's going to be a primary document for when we approach this at our strategic planning.
Yeah. Oh yeah. That's good groundwork. So with, that is our last, is our third discussion item and our last discussion item. So now we have public comment on non agenda items. There's no one in the room. So Chris Kelly, unless you have a public comment or Sergeant Mendez or any trustees who want to speak as citizens. Any public comments on that, non agenda items? And if not, we will go to other business. John, I think you have, might have something. Oh, I have, I have an.
You have other business.
Some, something, a little bird came our way today and just, so, so actually no. We were having a good discussion this morning and. The, it was really helpful that Jennifer and John brought this to our attention that, that. Just semantics, the titles really make it matter. And then John's title. Really isn't really sufficient. As you said, we need to come into the 21st century and, and town manager would be a more. Actual accurate job, town administrator doesn't necessarily, I guess, in, in the industry that, that, that. Doesn't necessarily equate to that position. So we're just bringing it up as an idea and see if there, if folks have an interest. In, in just pursuing that name change. And then I guess what that would be, we'd be bringing that back as an item later.
It actually takes an ordinance change in the code. It provides town administrator. But I will echo what Mayor Billy said. It is, it is pretty uncommon to have town administrator be the CEO title for towns. It is a statutory town model, but there are many statutory town CEOs that are titled town manager. So that is very acceptable. And I think more in line with the duties that. That. John does for the, for the town.
And to be clear, isn't it like town administrator and zoning?
Yes. And I think that's another, like a, just clarity for role setting for our organization that helps too a little bit.
Yeah. Yes, I would be in favor of putting that on a future. Agenda.
I would too. Tierney's, Tierney's nodding.
Nod.
Chris, Tanya?
Yeah, sure.
Yep, agreed.
Thank you all. That means a lot. So we, I appreciate that.
Well, thanks for pointing it out because I just had no clue.
Yeah. Do you, I mean, we can make this fairly simple and bring it back as an ordinance for the next meeting as an action item, if you guys would like. Okay.
Yeah, I think it's one of those situations where it doesn't really require discussion beforehand, right? As a discussion item. Yeah.
Just, just a real quick question on it. There are no like HR implications to a, the title change?
No, I'm still, all of the staff reports to me right now, which is really what that title really says. And then I report to the board. Macy is appointed by the board, but that's still, she's structured under my administration. So I don't think that you're going to, there's really no change because my role is already structured that way. It's just the title didn't change.
Okay.
Just out of curiosity, what would be the concern running through your trustee Larson?
Oh, you know, we're just doing, you know, in my real, my real job, we're doing a, you know, looking at people's titles and roles. And at least at the university. Changing people's titles ties into wage, the wage model the university uses and certain titles have certain possible, you know, salary ranges. So changing somebody's title from administrator to manager at, at the university. Means a salary band, a potential salary band change. And I didn't know if we had that kind of HR structure where, you know, a manager means you're from X to Y. But a administrator means you're from, you know, Z to Y and it's $10,000 less. We don't have any of those kind of implications within our HR structure.
There, there is not, there's not those structures, you know, it, it. I will look at the Equal Pay Act, which is one thing in Colorado that applies to. Job promotions, those types of things, but I, I don't think that this triggers that. I mean, I, I'm, I'm 100% confident it doesn't trigger it. It's just a title change. And the same job functions are the same, you know, same job duties will remain with John.
Beautiful. Thank you.
Anything else you need, Jennifer?
Motion to adjourn.
No, no, I have another comment.
Yeah, go for it.
Uh, it's no big deal. It's just more of a question for John regarding the Ned Rink Trail, that ProSAB. And one of our community members has graciously. Uh, volunteered to donate his time and equipment to create that little trail from the rink to the school. Wondering if those papers have been signed and if that's ready to go. Bring in, ready to roll, I think.
I am going to be 100% honest and say I'm not comfortable discussing that contract yet in public because we're still trying to work through the terms of it. But I think everyone has really good intentions of getting that done so that we can start that work soon.
Okay, have you met with the volunteer of the community as to talk about any problems with the contract or anything?
Yeah, we're working on that right now. So I, I want to get that done too, as soon as we possibly can. That's on the priority list right now.
Okay. So can I, can I connect with you tomorrow to talk about this more?
Sure.
Great, thank you.
Did you hear a motion?
Second.
Mayor Billy?
Yes.
Trustee Corvalon?
Yeah.
Trustee Ty?
Yes.
Mayor Protim Sterling?
Yes.
Trustee Maris?
Yes.
And trustee Larson?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. The meeting is adjourned at 9:39 PM.
Thank you everyone. Great work today.
Good night all.
Good night.
Hi.
Hope things go well out there. Night, Tanya.